Thank you. Now, please join me in the invocation. Dear God, we pray you will bless and guide us through this meeting. Help us to have productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and find principles that we can agree upon. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to take those, take action to accomplish our goals. In your name we pray, amen. All right, now join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. God bless Texas.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move to agenda item four, approval of the minutes from the July fifteenth Planning and Zoning meeting. Entertain a motion.
Can I make a motion? Can we approve the minutes?
Okay, do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any changes? No? And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Before I move to citizens' comments, I just want to welcome our two newest commissioners. Welcome to joining the commission. It's good that you're here, and we look forward to your inputs. And I think you'll find we're a pretty, we'll have a lot of good discussions. I always agree with everything, but at the end of the day, we're, we all come from the same, same place. We know we want to help our city, help it be better. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask, are there any citizens that want to make comments tonight? No, ma'am? No? Okay. With that, I'm going to close item five and move on to item six. But before we get to item six, the formal policy discussion on the plat, I would like to jump to item six-two and make, have for consideration the appointment of the chairman. That's something we have to do every year. We appoint a new chairman from within the commission. I'm happy to continue if you'll have me, but if anybody else wants to step in, I'll also allow that, you know, that's fine. I think it's a good opportunity for, for other, other voices. So with that, I'll ask for any motions.
I nominate Mark Kipit for chairman.
There you go. All right, any, any discussion? I call for the vote.
Would you be able to take it if we do?
What, deny it? Oh, I think I can handle it. With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Show that unanimous. And now I just want to move on to item six-three, which is consider the appointment of the co-chair for planning and zoning. You know, our current co-chair is Robert Rhodey. I've attempted to ask him to stay on. He's preferred to let someone else step into the breach.
If someone else would like to occupy that position, I would graciously welcome you. If not, I will continue on, but I didn't, I want to give anybody else a chance. If they want to, want to be the vice chair, please speak up.
I nominate Robert Rhodey for vice chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Robert. It's a good team. I, I'm happy. So with those two, those two items out of the way, now we can come back and take item six dot one, and I'm going to turn it over to staff. Peyton, would you please present us with the details?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Good evening, commission. The subject property is a 1.796 acre single lot located in the McLendon-Chisholm extraterritorial jurisdiction on the south side of 205, approximately 495 feet south of 548. The Rockwall CAD property ID is 336417. The applicant is requesting approval of a replat of one lot to dedicate necessary easements for development. This application is administratively complete and is in conformity with the City of McLendon-Chisholm's Code of Ordinances. Staff recommenda, the staff recommendation is full approval.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the request for the subject property of 1.796 acre, single acre, single lot located in the McLendon-Chisholm ET extraterritorial jurisdiction, north side of SH 205, approximately 495 feet south of FM 548, Rockwall CAD property ID 336417. Its application is administratively complete and in conformity with the City of McLendon-Chisholm Code of Ordinances.
Okay, have a second? Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, thank you. Have a motion, a second, all open for discussion? Any questions for comments, questions, anything for staff? I'll just go down the line, look down, any, no? Tom, any thoughts?
No.
No? Anything, sir? All right? No? No? Okay. I have none either. So with that, I'll ask for the vote for approval of the plat. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Again, show that unanimous. All right, with that, we're going to close it. So I think now we move on to item seven. This is an opportunity for any of the commissioners to make any comments, address any items of interest, give any direction staff that they want. If there's anything, I'll just, going to go down, I have something to bring back to the commission, so I'll just move down. Anything, anything, Tom? You get anything? No? No, sir?
Thank you for having me.
Okay, well, you are more than welcome to be here. Mr. Rhodey, anything? Okay.
No, I just wanted to welcome the two new gentlemen. I'll keep your name again a little later, okay? And I do appreciate what you did for Jerry Parker.
All right, thank you. All right, so what I would like to do is we'll set the next planning and zoning meeting. And Angela, I think we would do that as a matter of routine on the sixteenth of September. Okay, so that will be the sixteenth. Any, any conflicts? Anybody has any major conflicts you know of? Is Tom's calendar free? I'm asking the boss, Tom. Okay? All right, so we'll set the meeting for the sixteenth. But in the interim, we are attempting to, I know council is wanting to get a dressal of the updating the ordinances. Part of the step in doing that will be updating our land use designations. I think most of you have seen or received a copy of this. It's, I don't know, fifteen pages or so of specific definitions for residential, non-residential, and special conditions. For example, apartment is a residential land use, and then where that would be done within our zoning. And then if it is a permitted application, a permitted use, a specific use permit or prohibited use, so PS, or it's prohibited. And then any special conditions. So I'm going to ask Peyton if he can email that to all the members of planning and zoning. Before you leave today, please check with Angela and make sure she has all your right email address and cell, or cellphone number.
I think I have it.
Yeah, if, if you have, great. So we want to make sure, so we can get, get in touch with everybody, because obviously quorum's always a, make sure we're going to have in the meeting.
Yes, and to complement that point, Mr. Kipit, if you do have questions, or if you need clarity on any of the land use designations, the symbols that are associated with said designations, feel free to reach out to me. I know I have your guys' personal information, but as long as it's not in quorum, I'm happy to give you guys as much advice as you need, info, not advice, but if there are land uses that you're unsure of or you need clarity on, feel free to reach out.
It can be advice too from staff, so that is, that is a permissible use.
If it's, if it's your second or fifth time looking at a land use chart, and you, you need some clarity on things, I'm happy to help.
But the reason this is important is because wherever, every one of our zoning cases, or with, if it's a zoning case for a PD, we're going to have specific use applications that are going to be authorized. And what we don't want to do is inadvertently leave a time bomb or a hand grenade for a future commissioner or a future council on some land use that we overlooked on the land use chart, because these are all specific definitions, you know, dwelling, HUD assisted code, manufactured home, dwelling industrial housing, dwelling mobile home, right? It's all the different types of, of structures, usage, and the only thing that I see, Peyton, is our residential uses, the one thing we are going to have to do is we have an SF1.O that is not listed on this chart, because the chart was created prior to that. The chart itself is a little old. They'll be graceful about that, give it, give it grace. The, but we need to get it, we really need to go through this. I think Peyton's done a great job last couple of cases, trying to sort through all the, all the landmines, but this one hasn't been especially important, it would do that. So with that said, I would like to call for a work session on Tuesday, the second of September, at 6:30. It shouldn't take too long. We can, we're going to focus solely in that session to work through this chart. We'll give guidance to, you know, give guidance to the staff. We can discuss anything, have clarification, if there's changes, administrative changes we want to make, because then Peyton will be able to put that together and then come back for the P and Z meeting that will be two weeks later. And that, that P and Z meeting will take this on a formal action for approval, and then I'll move on to city council for, for their consideration of approval. So we get, we get that, and it's really important first step in, as we start to address our ordinances. The other thing Peyton is going, I, Peyton and I have talked about, I just want to make sure I get it out on the table and, and get it out into the public as well. The commercial development, again, I think our last commercial development case that we had, Peyton did it, I want to compliment him again, and city staff on the great job they did, working with the developer. And what we need to do is get a little more formality, right? We have the comprehensive plan, but it gives a layer, next layer down of definition of what that would look like. So I want to start moving in a direction, because I want to, I've asked city council informally to, for consideration, but now that I have my, my liaison council member here, council member London, I guess he can actually take this for action, potentially. I don't know, you're, we'll, we'll work on the roles and missions. But the idea is to have, develop a, in my mind, I'll call it a commercial overlay, an overlay district, something that Peyton would then be able to put into a document of ten, fifteen pages, whatever it is, and able to give to a developer and say, okay, this is, as you develop, these are the standards we would like you to develop too. And, you know, we'll figure out, Peyton will advise us on work he has done prior in Plano, right?
Frisco.
Frisco. On that, and...
But this, this really, this, this wouldn't really have to do with that. It's just the fact that, you know, there are land use designations, at the end of the day, that we have here in McLendon-Chisholm that are just pretty obsolete, so we're, you know, it's time to give this chart a good update, so.
Yeah.
And that'll be the purpose of the workshop.
The workshop's chart here, but I think the other step, and this is a separate action, but not formalized yet, but I'm working with council to get it formalized, is to create a, create a better definition of our commercial zone.
By, by zoning boundary?
Zoning boundary, right?
Okay, I understand.
However we do it, and then be able to provide specific guidance, and that I think it will help clarify, and so when we say we want the look and feel of McLendon-Chisholm, at least on the commercial side, we'd be able to say, well, these are the kinds of elevations, lot layouts, parking, right? This is landscaping, all the lighting, signage, all the things we want associated with that commercial development, because obviously the, once we're dealing with raw, for the most part, raw land now, and once it's developed, it's a lot easier to do it better the first time, or write it the first time, than it is to fix it in a demo route. And we, I just, I reflect on the last case we had here, Garner, went really well, but it took a lot of extra work to bring that all together. I think we can help, help Peyton in his, in his endeavor, and, and make life a little easier on him. easier on him, and also on staff, and then ultimately on council, so that when they get it, they know that's, what, what standard is being built to. It's not, you don't have six or, five or six different interpretations. Okay, sir?
Yes, I have one thing. Does everybody on the commission have one of these books that has all the different categories of, if not, it would be helpful?
Are you, are you talking about the land, the land use definition?
Oh, it's entire.
And, and on this, just as an FYI, this top part up here in shaded, okay? For those of us that, that are, that sometimes you get what all these things mean on page general provisions, which it, it has all the, the codes.
Yeah.
So if, when you look at this thing, if you, if you have this book, which I, if somebody doesn't have the book, would you please see Peyton or, or city secretary so that they can make you one, because it has a lot of information. It'll tell you what all these codes are on the top of this document that Mark is talking about.
What, Angela, what, if, these were done by the
Yeah.
Prior city secretary. What it includes is, and you can look, there's the code of ordinance, pronouns for the code ordinance, for the art, for the general provisions. Mr. Rhodey just highlighted the code of ordinance, chapter 10, the subdivision ordinances. And then, then also the comprehensive plan, a copy of the comprehensive plan's in here. And then she had some meeting procedures, and then public hearing procedures, I think from TML, just to help guide us.
And, and one other thing, could you publish a roster of the commission with Oh, okay, good. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, and that way we're, yeah, hang on a second, Angela. I'll, I'll adjourn, and you guys can hang around and get the, get hurt, but I just want to thank you for all the work you're doing. And I know that's, these, these are really helpful, but I don't think we've produced one for now for a couple of years.
I'll make sure you get one.
And it will be, I don't need one, Robert doesn't need one.
Everyone else does, I think, probably.
It'd just be the new, new members of, new members of the commission.
Okay.
Could you also include this, you were going to hand it out about the geographic districts and development, just some of the things from the survey? I think, I thought it was, I thought it was very handy, just general information, and I included it in the book from the survey, so
Okay.
That's all I got.
Very good. All right, thank you. Okay, any, any further comments from staff?
I guess just for clarification, for that September 2nd workshop, are we only going over 3.1
Yes.
Uses permitted?
Yes, that's it. I just, I'd like to do that, and I shouldn't, it'd take us about 45 minutes, I would think, to
Okay, understood. I just wanted to know how you were interpreting the other item by zoning boundary?
The other, the other item is just, I, I really want to make sure we help our commercial developers in talking with a couple of them informally, and also in communication with staff, or with council after the la, a couple of council members after the last meeting. It just would help clarify for them, so they, and their decisions, right? They understand what we're looking at and how we rendered our decisions. Kind of like a guideline. It is, it's a workbook, I don't know, you know, I love Peyton, he's the, he's the big brain for this.
The workbook on what?
For the commercial boundary zone, you know, commercial overlay.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to go over this with you. There's, there's a future land use overlay, and then you just have your normal general business. Some of them can kind of overlap, but at the end of the day, it really does root from this chart, the 3.1 chart in the zoning ordinance.
This next chart's very, is critical.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay?
Yeah, great, great question. That's, that's one thing that I did want to add, and this is extreme. I tell all applicants for the last several years to always do this, have it up on two different tabs. So you'll have the 3.1 uses permitted chart up, and then on a different tab, you want to have up the land use, the definitions tab within the zoning ordinance at the very end of it. That way, if you see a term like accessory, dwelling unit, detached, attached, whatever it may be, you can go to exactly that term at the bottom of the zoning ordinance, and it tells you exactly what that legally means within our incorporated city limits. Does that make sense? Because sometimes common terms that we all might use every day might be, that might deviate from how the zoning ordinance defines it.
Okay. All right. And on that note, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. So, all right. Call this meeting adjourned at 18:54.